Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 4th budget public hearing in the green room. And we will begin simply listening to what it is that you have to tell us. Unfortunately, we will not be able to respond to you at that point, but then we will close that public hearing down and open up a special meeting in which we'll discuss the budget ourselves. Anyone interested in speaking? There is a notebook there if you want to sign up. And if you would please speak into that microphone there, that would be appreciated. And I believe we'll get started.
Dolly Mizetti? On up.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dolly Mizetti, 7 Twin Oaks Lane in Clinton. And for those of you on the board that don't know me, I was the tax collector here for 10 years and sat on that side of the table for about 12 years as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I just have a couple of questions on the line items. Adjustments to revenue, Liberty Place abatement, I was involved in that committee that built that, and we get an abatement every year. I note there's no Big Y abatement number, and I know there's an abatement for their taxes, and I'm just curious what that number is. It's got to be here somewhere. I don't know where it is, but I don't see it here. The applied fund balance, you're using all of that money for capital projects, the 3.689, and that's for capital. And appropriated surplus, you're taking another $350,000 out of surplus. I know there's a percentage that we have to have in our surplus, our fund balance, our savings account if you want. And are we at that level? I'd like to make sure that we stay at that level. And I know the elderly tax relief, that $150,000 number has not changed, I believe, since 2013. I believe we might want to consider having that committee reopened and possibly change that amount. I'm not saying to an exorbitant amount, but help the seniors that are eligible for that. There are strict guidelines in income, so I believe that might be something that we could at least look at. And I know we just got a brand-new fire truck, and has that been paid for? Or are we bonding that, or is it somewhere else to be seen? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Erica Gilvin, 2 Alden Drive. I'm also the chair of the Clinton Board of Education. I wanted to come to just share a little bit of context and insight. Obviously, we've been working collaboratively on our fiscal needs for a number of weeks now, but I wanted to bring a couple things to your attention. As you're probably already aware, as the town has had a change to their health insurance rates to the good, so has the Board of Education, which has resulted in a reduction of just over $161,000. The other point that I really kind of want to make is that Clinton is growing. And I mean that in kind of as a, in two ways. The first of which is, of course, the budget that we have come to you and presented you with is higher. It's a higher request than we have made in past years. To break that down, I want to make two points. The first of which is that our enrollment is actually 56 students larger than what was represented, what was projected for us. And if you kind of just do the math, that's, not that it all equals out, but that comes to be about $1 million more. So that's just one piece of it. The second piece that I want to point out is that that increase in the number of students that we have in district does not include the 23 students that are outplaced currently. And for those students, and in terms of our special services and tuition and transport, the increase for our budget has been 2.02 percent. And that, in part, is those 23 students who are members of our community that we are responsible for educating, responsible for providing them with the services that we are not able to in district. And they are not included in that 56 students that is an increase over last year. The other thing that I want to point out is just that, you know, really, the vast majority of our increase is our people. We are a people-driven business. We are a people-driven community. Our staff and benefits, salaries and benefits, accounts for 2.89 percent of that increase, and everything else that's not special services and our staff is 0.07 percent increase. So we have really done a tremendous amount of work to get this budget as tight as possible. The increases are real, but they are driven by people, and we're not adding people. We're not adding, we're not adding staff. We're shifting staff, but we're not adding staff. And it's members of our community that we have a responsibility to make sure have the proper education. It's that simple. So thank you very much for all of your hard work. Thank you for working with us. It's a collaboration that we greatly value and respect, and we respect the decision-making that is in front of you tonight. So thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ed Albrecht. I live at 2 Grove Hill Road. The reason, I already spoke to the school board the other day. I'm here for a handout for the children of the lunch program. The lunch program was in deficit almost, it was $4,600 bucks. So, but John, who handles the lunch budget along with Mary Ann, they do a great job. So the families that couldn't pay, the cutoff is $36,000. That's $3,000 a month. So I don't know what the entire budget is. I just came in at the end, and I saw what a parent was going through because they couldn't pay. They couldn't pay. But the school pays. They pay for everything, you know, if you can't pay. But then they go after the parents, they're getting demand letters, because the program is run, you know, for a profit, you know? So I came up with my friends, we came up with the $3,600 bucks. We paid, so all those families are all current. I'd like to put some money into that account. We have a rainy day fund here, but it'll take some structure from the commission and the school board to come up with the way of getting that money in there. And the town manager was gracious enough to speak to me, said that you just can't pick and choose. I guess you gotta do the whole budget. Now, there's 15 states that pay for breakfast and lunch. Massachusetts, our neighbor, they pay for their kids' lunch. It's not a lot of money, but when you, but when you don't have the money, it's a lot of money. And you see the food pantry, the lines are crazy. But if it gets out of control again without you guys helping, then I'll step in again and go hit up some more friends. But we paid off the balance for these, you know, these families to help them. And I'd like to take, we have a lot of money in the rainy day fund, whatever you call it. It's millions, we have millions in there. So I'm looking for, if you just can't pick and choose, you have to do the whole thing, find out what the whole budget is. Mary Ann might know. She knows what the budget is. But I already went to the school board, they were very gracious to me, and I just want to help the children. I don't have any children in the school system at all, you know? And people say, "Well, Father, I have no kids in there." Okay, so I have no kids in there, so I shouldn't have to donate to the school budget. I shouldn't have to pay for the school budget. But that is how it works. We're a community, and we're a good community, and we should be able to pay and give everybody the necessary tools to work with, you know? That includes, you know, special education and everything else. And I think the school board's doing a great job, and the town's doing a good job with the budget. So I thank you for your time. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Karen Goslin. I work, I live at 152 Glenwood Road. I have three children, a 14-year-old, a 12-year-old, a 10-year-old. All three of them actually have special needs, two on the autism spectrum, one of those on the autism spectrum with dyslexia, and then I have a student who has a 504 for a chronic illness. I'm really, I've been very discouraged by some of the rhetoric, and it's not necessarily coming from the board, but from some parts of the community, about the concern about this 5 percent raise, which is mostly driven by the costs of, the costs that are associated with outplacement and with special services. A couple of points that I want to make is, one, according to the IDA, we have to fund it. It's federally mandated, right? Two, all of our children deserve, and this is in the IDA, all of our children deserve an education in the least restrictive environment possible. When we do have students who need to be outplaced, it is because a small district like Clinton does not have the resources to make those children literally safe. Most of the time, it is about the children's safety, right? Whether that's physical safety or mental safety. And to complain about this rising cost is a little bit, is insulting, actually, right? Because this is exactly, this is what you would do with any child. I have also heard rhetoric about, like, "Oh, we don't really need to do this, we don't need to outplace all of those kids." Kim Pierce does her job. She does everything she can to keep kids in the district. Again, if they have to go out of district, it's because the children are not safe in the place where they are, okay? And so, you know, and part of the reason is because we're a small district, we can't serve all children. Like, it's just a fact, right? If you are concerned, and you think, "Hey, maybe we don't have to outplace so many students," you still need to pay the money to have the resources so that students can stay in the district. The other thing that I'm going to say is if you don't put the money towards these students, you're going to be paying the bills on the other side of the budget, which is the town budget, in increased support for human services, police, all of those things, right? I'm going to, I mean, as a parent of multiple kids, even with the incredible support that we have gotten from our school district, I am literally paying tens of thousands of dollars. Over the 10 years, I've probably paid out of my own pocket, close to $100,000, to support my two children. Why? Because there's only so much the school can do, that there is no real genuine infrastructure for people with disabilities. The co-pays, the transportation, the extra costs of having qualified care to take care of your children, all of that adds up. No one is taking advantage of the district, okay? We need to spend this money because the children have the human right to an adequate education. Like, we're not asking for bells and whistles, we're just asking for them to be safe and to have access to the education. So please continue to support the excellent work that's being done in special education here. Know that the families, like, anything that you do to support special education in this town will come back to you in the benefit to the families that live in this town. So thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. Hi. Laura Colbank, 8 Fernwood Lane. And I just want to add to what's already been said about the cost of special education, the sharp increases in special education, excuse me, which has already been well addressed. But I think what we need to do is keep this increase in context with other surrounding towns, especially given those sharp increases in special education costs. I think the Clinton School System and administration and Board of Ed have done an amazing job keeping the costs in line with other towns, or lower. For example, Region 4 in Chester, Deep River, Essex is a 6 percent increase, Westbrook 5.3, Haddon-Killingworth 5 percent, Guilford 5.1, and Branford 4.7. So I think the administration and Board of Ed is to be commended for keeping our costs down and for doing such a fantastic job. And I'll add, both my children have graduated, but I will continue to support the quality education in Clinton. So please, please continue to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me just, oh. Okay, then. Hello, all. I'm Ian Coyne. This is my first town meeting I've come to, probably because it's the first time I've looked in my library email and realized what date it was on the day it was. However, since I'm here, and the subject of special education in this town of Clinton has been brought up, I feel compelled that now would be the perfect time to offer some insight, as a person who grew up as a child within the Clinton School System and went through the special education program in the Clinton School System. Now, I am all well and good, and I understand that it does need money to perform at its best, and it needs money to get the resources it needs to make kids who, like I used to be, feel safe and achieve their best within the school system. But I feel like there's been a stunning lack of another word that is missing in this conversation: oversight. Oversight and accountability. Does the town board, does the town itself, does the school board, does the entire school system itself put in enough oversight into the programs they offer for children with special needs? Do they pay enough attention to the people they hire to be left in charge of kids with special needs, and to look out for their interests, and to train them? Do we do research into the programs we hire out to help people with special needs, especially people with disabilities, both cognitive and physical? And do you spend enough time to really stop and think about the types of program each student needs? Or do you just try to create a program that can handle all students with special needs, as if every kid with special needs and every kid with a mental or cognitive disability or physical disability is all the same? As a person who went through that program, I can tell you, going into school system and just being put with a group of kids who are not like you, but everyone thinks they're like you, because you may have a learning disability, but the other student may have a cognitive disability and not even be able to talk to you, it doesn't really make you feel good or seen or heard. And even worse than that is that, personally, from my personal experience going through the school system, oftentimes I found the adults hired to take care of children with special needs, or to teach them as independent and outpatient occupational or physical therapists. Often, neither didn't know what they were doing, or sometimes were hired to be a special aide to children with low functioning autism, and yet, they seemingly took some enjoyment in making those children feel uncomfortable and unsafe. So again, I call upon you, the members of our town council, to really consider accountability and oversight, and make sure that if you really, truly care about children with special needs and disabilities who have a hard time enough struggling in school as it is, that isn't set up for them to learn at their best, because it has to be set up to appeal to everyone. But if we're going to have programs to specifically appeal to children with special needs so they can learn at their best, and feel safe, and grow, and learn, and develop, we're going to not, we're going to need to start putting people in charge of those children who have a lot of expertise, and more importantly, have a lot of care and compassion, and patience and understanding. Because putting in adults in charge of special needs children who do not care about them, who do not make children with special needs feel safe in a school environment, will not only lead you to eventually spending more money having to send them out to special schools and special programs, it's going to be a failure of this town and a genuinely terrible failure of this community if we cannot teach our most vulnerable people, special needs children and disabled children of any kind, and give them a safe school learning environment. You're failing the people who need you most unless you do more to look into the people you literally put in charge of helping them. And if you're going to start putting people in charge of helping them, don't just focus how much on you can spend on them. Make sure you're applying your resources wisely and putting the right people in charge to give these children and these future students, scholars, learners, adults, and future taxpayers and community members the kind of care that they need, the kind of care that they deserve, the kind of care and learning and teaching that they'll need to become the best versions of themselves. I know this is probably really sudden to hear and out of nowhere, because you probably don't know me unless you personally know me, as Ian Coyne, who's always lived at 38 Tudor Road all of his life here in this town. But since the subject was brought up, I genuinely, truly feel like if this town wants to do more to help people with mental and cognitive impairments and mobility impairments, physical and mental disabilities, it needs to start hearing from people who have those disabilities and hear about what their lives are like, and especially in the areas they struggle in. If the town wants to do more for people like me and like Clinton, a town where everyone can succeed, no matter their background or what makes their life harder or easier. Thank you.
Hearing none. Will adjourn the public hearing? And is there a motion to adjourn the public meeting? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Does anyone have a need for a few minutes' break, or should we go into the next? Okay. Everyone okay? All right. Okay. So may I have a motion to begin the town council's special meeting? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right. So I would like to turn this moment over to Richard Brown, our interim town manager, to discuss some changes to the budget that was sent to the newspaper.
Thank you. The two changes were mentioned by one of our speakers. When we started out the budget process, we were anticipating increases in health insurance in the area of about 5 percent. The rate renewals came in at about 2 percent. That allows us to reduce the Board of Education operating budget by $161,912, and it allows us to reduce the town operating budget by $203,000.
Okay. So we'll begin, is there a motion to reduce the town's operating budget by $203,000?
Sub moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question about the Board Assessment of Appeals. I know we removed the contingency that was placed there. I guess when we had our discussion through that, we removed the contingency under the assumption we were going to win all the, we were going to win all the Board Assessment of Appeals, but apparently, we didn't win them all. So I know there's going to be a cost associated there, so I didn't know if that was discussed or talked about, or what happened there.
The numbers that we're using for the grand list are the result of where we ended up with through the appeal process.
So the final number, it does include any losses that we incurred due to the Board Assessment of Appeals?
Right.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Okay. All right. Next, is there a motion to reduce the Board of Education's operating budget by $161,912 for the reduction in the health insurance? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? All right. Is there anything else that any council member has to add at this point? Amendments?
Can I answer one of Dolly's questions, or no?
We can.
No? Okay. He can talk in general. I'm just going to tell her about the Lib P abatement. I'll tell her after.
Okay.
No problem. Great. No problem.
All right. Anyone else have anything to add? amend? No? Okay. Chris, anything? Are you good?
Well, I guess what Chris is saying, I'm doing it in the wrong format. I should say to Mr. Brown, could you please answer Dolly Mizetti's question about the Liberty Place abatement? The figure, she couldn't find it, I guess, on the sheet she had, and we have it right here in front of us.
No, she was interested in.
Oh, the Big Y.
She was interested in Big Y. And that was a question that I asked when I started reviewing the revenue numbers, and I was told that the previous town manager, Carl, had accounted for that in his revenue estimates.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
But the question with regard to the undesignedated fund balance, there was a question, are we at the appropriate level?
Yeah, I'd have to look through my notes, but I know that we have, we're well above the 15 percent, which is our policy. I believe we were probably another 6 or 7 percent above that before we began this. So with everything that we're doing, we'll still be 3 or 4 million above the 15 percent.
I think we're actually, we're 4.4 million over the target, which is 400,000 more than we were last year. And that doesn't include, did we just receive another 600,000 from the roof project?
That's what I've been told, but I haven't seen the documentation for it.
The roof project, finally? I think we're going to be getting some more money there, too.
Anyone else? Any other questions that need to be addressed, Dennis? That you can think of? Any other questions you want to address?
No, I'm fine.
All right. So we are on to item... So we are on to item number six, to recommend the town and Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and send the referendum to, send it to referendum on May 8, 2024. Is there someone who would like to make that motion that you all have? Go ahead, Dennis.
Make the one for the town.
All right. Go right ahead.
Motion that the town council of the town of Clinton hereby recommends a town government budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025, in the amount of $23,761,131, and send to referendum on May 8, 2024.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. And then we have a motion for the school board. Would someone care to make that?
I'll make it. Motion that the town council of the town of Clinton hereby recommends an educational budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025, in the amount of $40,662,912, and send to referendum on May 8, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item number seven. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have a question. Can we just go over the mill rate on what the data?
Sure. I'll turn that to Richard.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Mill rate?
Oh, the mill rate actually gets set after the budget goes through referendum, but we have a tentative mill rate of 30.26. The rate of increase is about a 1.44% increase in the mill rate.
That's great.
I just have one advertisement, if you will. I'd like to thank Lisa, Donna, and Mary for, in the absence of a finance director, getting all these numbers together so that we could get something in front of the town council.
I agree. Any other discussion?
Richard, for his help stepping in at the last minute, Carl for lining everything up for us. We went from a potential town budget mill rate increase of over 3% to down to 1.44. So we did some good work.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor? We're adjourning.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. Did I not make one?
So moved.
All right. Second?
Second.
Discussion, which I believe we were on with Dennis. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.